Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the November fourteenth River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kristi, roll call please.
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Donning.
Here.
Morsett.
Here.
Miller.
Odean.
Here.
Okay, next move on to the approval of the minutes from the October twenty-fourth meeting.
I move approval.
Second. First and second, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, approval of the bills with Mr. Bierstedt.
Mayor and council, I move approval of payment of the bills in the amount of three million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and forty-six cents. Subject to the comptroller.
Second.
First and second on bills, questions? Oh, that's right, I'm so sorry. First and second on the bills, any questions or comments? Sorry, Kristi, we gotta do a roll call. Forgot about that. Sorry, Nick.
Bjork.
Yes.
Odean. Odean. Carroll.
Yeah.
Morsett.
Yes.
Donning.
Yes.
Bierstedt.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next move on to public comments tonight. Public comments will be two minutes. If there's anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to stand up and talk about, now would be the time. Just come on up and state your name and your address and...
Good evening. November is National Homeless Awareness Month. River Falls Common Council passed a law which makes it unlawful to be in possession of even a blanket to stay warm while resting on any property the city owns or rents. This effectively criminalizes the homelessness of those in extreme poverty in River Falls, especially when River Falls Police Department enforces this law exclusively upon those who have no shelter but their car or a sleeping bag on public property. Even on public property where it's not unlawful to do so. Homelessness is too complex an issue to expect the River Falls Police Department to solve without specialized training, yet that is exactly what you're asking of them. You have squarely placed the burden of heading the city's response to homelessness on someone with no training or desire to do that. Yet, as is often the case, this unwanted responsibility has been shifted from the city administration to the police department. Police enforce laws, but enforcing a no blanket law is a cruel and unproductive way to serve and it serves no purpose but to hide the growing problem of poverty in River Falls. It's clear to everyone that watches these meetings that you don't want to hear that. And it's clear that your trusted advisors understand it's best not to be completely honest with you. If it involves telling you something you don't want to hear. As an example, when Chief Young was asked if anyone needing housing in River Falls could get it, he responded yes. This was clearly not true, and if Chief Young believes it, he is clearly not the person who should bear the main responsibility of caring for those experiencing homelessness in River Falls. Good cops don't want to do bad things, and forcing them to do that will result in more officers working someplace else.
Okay, is there anybody else in the audience has anything they'd like to say? Come on up.
Benjamin Fox, FOC HS, twenty-five, twenty-nine, Powell Avenue, P O W L L. Um, I would like to thank the council members that attended and the staff and other community members that invented the empty bowls I met at St. Chris's Church a few weeks ago. It was a point to the room was almost probably a little bit too full. Um, there was a lot of good discussions there and things, but I know that you guys usually had like a kind of update on homelessness and other things of beauty. But given a couple of recent events in town, it may be helpful to have maybe discussion with your community partners on domestic violence and assault and what happens to people that leaving a domestic situation in winter. Or mental health, we've had losses in our community overall, so it may be good to have one of your community partners, we haven't had a lot of those lately. Or just overall, you know, because those are also issues that deal with these homelessness is kind of a symptom of an issue, you know? I have it right now where my parents are sheltering a person, she doesn't have a house. Where's she gonna go? She has nowhere to go. So it's not only one issue that leads to homelessness, it's also symptoms in the community. And finally, you guys have done a lot of work on plans. A lot of these say, mental health, community development, you know, meeting your neighbors. What do you want to do? Put in bike trails, put in bike paths, put in walking lanes, put in open spaces. And I've also been told to go take a hike, and so it'd be good to also, you know, realize that you are doing a lot of things to help overall mental health of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in your audience? Yep. Go ahead, Ms.
I just would like to take a moment to recognize the fire department. And last Monday, November sixth, I attended the, uh, the fire department, uh, weekly meeting where they discussed their operations and so forth. And after that, they had, um, they had some exercise out in the community, uh, and I was able to get into the ladder truck and drive around with a couple of firefighters. Spent about an hour and a half going around town, looking at different areas of town where the ladder truck, which is pretty important, uh, even for just a two-story structure, where they can get in and out of and, and the concerns that they have about snow removal on certain corners. So some of these developments, um, uh, you know, we really need to, we always see the adopt a fire hydrant, uh, to shovel out the snow, uh, but also too, some of these places need to, um, make sure that the fire trucks can actually make a corner or get into some areas. Mainly, it's some of the new development, um, in, in the areas where, uh, there's some pretty high density, uh, with some townhouses and so forth. But I wanted to thank the fire department and recognize their good work. I also wanted to suggest to my fellow council members that they, uh, make some time to go to the Monday night meetings at the fire department. They really appreciated the council person being there. And I also want to take a moment and, uh, suggest they also do a ride along with the police department. I've done a couple of those and those are very enlightening and you get to see, get to see a, a, a point of view from a, from a city staff person that you don't normally, uh, get to see. So I just wanted to thank them, uh, so that's...
Did they let you drive the truck?
No, but you know what happened? I'll tell you this story. Uh, I was sitting in the front seat of the ladder truck, we're headed up, uh, out M, and I moved my feet a little bit and you got earmuffs on and, and the, and the guy who was driving, Brian Roquette, says, "Yeah, the horn works." And I said, "Oh, okay." And he goes, "Get your foot off the horn button." I put my foot, evidently is on the horn, and I blew the horn pretty much from the hospital all the way up to Highview Meadows, so, um, people were probably wondering what, what big fire was going on, so, uh, if you ever ride along in the ladder truck, the horn button's right on the left side of the passenger seat, so...
Okay.
Um, I know you're gonna talk about a couple of other passings, but I just want to throw one out there real quick. For those that don't know, Dave Hegre, H E G, H E G R E, longtime downtime business owner at Colstead's and used to own Pop's Popcorn Wagon, passed away this last Saturday. So Dave was a good man, but I just want to pass that on and so blessings to marrying the kids and, um, we'll miss Dave.
And along those lines, I just want to say a little something about former mayor Katie Chafee. Uh, the council staff and I want to wish, uh, wish to express our deepest sympathies to the family of Katie. Um, Katie passed away on November fifth. Uh, she had served the city for many years in several capacities. She was elected as the city's first female mayor in April two thousand. She served one term in office. Katie was also employed with the city. She served as River Falls Public Library Gallery Director for several years and designed and hosted community shows and give events in the gallery. This work was a perfect fit as it allowed Katie to put her knowledge of law history, connections to the community, and creative talents to use. Katie also served on the city's plan commission and on the library foundation. She was an election inspector also. She also served on other community boards. A celebration of life, Katie's life will be held on Saturday, November eighteenth, uh, from three to seven at Bakken Young Funeral Home and Creation Service, which is over eight oh five East Division Street. And the council appreciates Katie's service to the city and she would be greatly missed. Okay, and we will move on. Uh, our public works director is manager is here, Erica Elifson, and she'll give us a little presentation on snow plowing. It's coming!
Unfortunately, it is. Good evening, mayor and city council members, and thank you so much for giving me some time tonight to speak with you about snow and ice control for the upcoming twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four winter season. As you had introduced me, thank you. My name is Erica Elifson, Public Works Manager, and I'm getting ready to jump in to my first full snow plowing season. I did get some on-the-job training last winter as I started in February, and honestly, I have been thinking about how we can make the process more efficient all summer. So yes, I have to admit, I was thinking about snow when it was a hundred degrees because I knew warm weather would soon pass. So first of all, I wanted to start off introducing the main snow plowing crew who keep our streets clear of snow and ice. I cannot say enough positive things about this team, their work ethic, dedication, and desire to come in to work in the middle of the night to plow snow is impressive and I am so proud to be a part of the team. The snow plowing team consists of a total of fourteen staff. Of those fourteen staff, there are ten maintenance workers, and I am gonna name them because I don't think they get enough recognition. Uh, Eric Weisman, Joey Sheeman, Todd Lubick, John Kuzlick, Lucas Peck, Troy Conley, Nate Herum, Joey Wallen, in addition to the maintenance leads, Charles Larson and Irv Peskhar. There are also two mechanics, Joe Querna and Jeff Wolf, who are responsible to plow the lower priority routes in case they need to be pulled, uh, to work on broken-down pieces of equipment. And we also have recruited one water wastewater operator, David Pinata, who unfortunately is not pictured. And when needed, I also have been known to jump in a plow truck myself. We may call in Kentill and Tommy Dalton in facilities and other water wastewater operators to maintain high priority routes during the extended storms. Historically, electric linemen were a part of the snow plowing team, but this year decided to utilize water wastewater staff instead. This is beneficial for the city if, for a couple of different reasons. One being the overall personnel cost savings, and the second being if there are electrical outages, that, uh, the key staff are available to be able to get, uh, service reinstated. So this is a picture of the snow plowing priority map. So many don't know that each street is prioritized in the city for snow plowing. High priority plow routes, think your main streets through town to get you to your home and business, are streets and trails alongside schools and emergency services. So think Second Street, Division Street, and Paulson Road, and then also Main Street, Winter Street, Maple Street, Cemetery Road, East Cascade, Powell Avenue, Radio Road, and Apollo Road are just some of what make up the high priority plow route. The medium priority plow route are the next largest streets that service many residents. So think your through streets to get you to the development you live in, like Roosevelt Street, Foster Street, Metals Drive, News Castle, East Johnson, and Third Street, just to name a few. Next comes the low priority plow routes, which nobody likes to really live in these, so apologize to those that do, um, but it has to be somebody, which, uh, those are, think of that area as the neighborhood streets that serve less residents, like Fairchild, Windflower, River Ridge, Church Street, Fourth Street, and Wested Cedar Street. And lastly, the lowest priority routes, which are typically the streets that end in a cul-de-sac, dead end, or considered short streets that serve the least amount of residents. This year, we added seven point three four lane miles to our snow plowing routes from the turnback of County Highway U and Radio Road from St. Crye County, plus the addition of streets in Oak Hill, Thompson Heights, Highview Metals, and South Point Housing Developments. And I wanted to also note that we didn't add any additional FTEs to be able to support and maintain those roadways. To compare, in two thousand twenty-two, we plowed ninety-two point four lane miles, and in two thousand twenty-three, we'll be plowing almost a hundred at ninety-nine point seven four lane miles. So there's lots of different pieces of equipment to get the job done. And I think one thing to note is that the number one way to clear snow is mechanically with equipment. Our snow plowing equipment consists of five plow trucks, one motor grader with a new left wing, and I emphasize new because it is on order and we haven't quite received it yet, uh, that will allow the grader to operate with traffic, a wheel loader with a blower attachment, and a Kenworth quad axle dump truck that are all used to clear Main Street and arterial feeder streets. We also have three four-by-four trucks with V plow blades for trails and alleys, one wheel loader with a V plow blade and a side wing, and also a John Deere tractor with a V blade, both clearing cul-de-sacs, dead ends, and parking lots. And we have one sweeper that we use to clean, uh, the sidewalks around town and also the bridge decks. If you did the math, that totals fourteen staff who are operating snow plowing equipment. Those fourteen staff plow snow at all hours of the night and early mornings, so students, residents, and businesses have clear and safe streets to get where they need to go. We contract with Linehan Home Lawn Services to remove snow along the trails in Whitetail and Sterling Pond's Corporate Park and Sterling Pond's residential trails, the center meeting on Main Street, and a few other small locations throughout town. We also contract for snow hauling services, which we are currently seeking proposals from qualified firms for the snow season. Our snow hauling contractor typically has had up to four trucks available for each snow hauling event. So we also use other tools to get the job done. Couple of them, um, are listed here with the beet heat, salt brine, and rock salt. So beet heat is safer for the environment because it's ninety-nine percent biodegradable. It also is cost-effective because beet heat is cheaper than salt. When using beet heat with salt brine at a thirty-seventy mix, thirty percent for the beet heat, seventy percent of the salt, the effectiveness of the salt increases at lower temperatures, reducing the amount of salt needed for de-icing. This is because beet heat sugar content lowers the effective working temperature of brine and salt alone. We make our salt brine in-house. As you'll see, we have a picture here that shows, uh, our storage containers. It is a combination of rock salt and water, and we also store it in a tank outside our building until it's dispensed into the plow trucks. When we put salt on the streets, it's always pre-wet with salt brine and beet heat because the liquid activates the salt and it also reduces scatter loss. Using salt alone is hard on the environment with its corrosive tendencies, and it does not work well alone in temperatures below freezing. When used in combination with salt brine and other, um, and beet heat, significantly less salt is needed on the streets, which helps keep our environment and the county clean. We still do need salt for the safety of our streets to melt snow and ice, so we must keep it on hand. Our salt shed here pictured can hold seven hundred tons of salt. Our salt shed is currently full for the season. We purchase salt off the state contract, which allows us to get the best pricing. We preorder how much salt we plan to use for the upcoming year each spring, and it's broken into two categories. Guaranteed early fill, which we order four hundred tons, and that then filled our shed in a guaranteed seasonal fill of an additional three hundred tons that we can take delivery on during the season. So the, probably the most important slide, or the slide that I hope most people retain, is this one with the expectations. Each snowing, each snow event is unique, and I think that's really important because not two events are, uh, the same, and it all depends on different things, like the time, duration, amount, and temperature at the current time the snow starts. So we could get multiple six-inch snow events in a snow season, and each event, again, will be planned unique to the current conditions. The time of the day the snow starts and ends, duration of the snow falling, and the total amount of snow accumulated, temperature, all play a role when staff get called in and what equipment they may be used. During the heavier, heavier, longer, and higher amounts of accumulation, we may run a dual plow route, meaning there are two trucks on the high priority streets, one following the other to clear the snow to the curb faster. Though each snow event is different, you can follow a general rule of thumb of what to expect. We pre-treat high priority streets to allow for less snow compacting, easier snow removal and de-icing. During a longer snow event, staff will be maintaining the high priority streets, which means multiple passes by homes and businesses along the high priority route will happen. Once a snow event ends, it takes eight to ten hours to clear the streets, which includes at least two passes made on each side of the street to move the snow to the curb. So I want to note that it is two passes, so if you see the plow truck go through once, you can guarantee we'll be going through again, so you might want to just wait to clear your driveway. During a... Sorry, I apologize. Uh, the following night after the snow has ended, staff come in to plow odd even parking and plow, blow, and haul snow off Main Street to the snow dump adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant. We truly do our best work at night because there is less traffic and obstacles to plow around. The days following the snow event are for hauling snow from lower priority areas like dead ends and cul-de-sacs and double checking all city-owned trails and sidewalks have been plowed and are not icy. So don't be alarmed, even after we have spent multiple days clearing snow, bare pavement may not be visible. And thank you, I appreciate you allowing me time to speak to you this evening on snow and ice control, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Erica, could you just, um, repeat, um, not that you said it this time, but, um, what the rules are for parking, um, during the winter?
Yes, so the rules are for odd even, it's, uh, November first to, uh, March, or March thirty-first. Apologize, thank you for correcting me, I should know that by heart. Um, and so what, what we'll do is, um, we'll clear half the street, assuming it, let's say it's an even, um, evening, we would clear, clear the, uh, odd side, and then the next night we would block. So typically, it does take two nights to clear the snow, so it is really important that people do adhere to that odd even. Uh, unfortunately, there are instances where we have asked for assistance, uh, from the PD to get ahold of, uh, car owners to be able to move them, so we, so we don't have to take it or tell.
So, um, it's always kind of confusing, so if it's, if it's an odd day today and even tomorrow...
It's the time where it starts at twelve oh one.
Twelve oh one.
Yep, so if at twelve oh one it's an even day, you need to park on the even side of the road.
So you park on that side, on the even side.
I have a question. So, um, one of the difficulties in my district, District One, is on Riverside Drive, and one of the longer conversations I've had with my constituents is how it bottlenecks up on between McDonald's up to where it abuts with Troy. And one of the understandings I had with the city is once Tattersall would move in, that we'd have funds available to take the priority and move it up, so they would also get it, because it's a circus there in the winter. Has, is that included this year?
So, uh, council member Donning, yes, we did change the priority of that up one. I believe it was listed as a low and now it's listed as a medium. Um, I have been told that there are some challenges in that area because there's lots of street parking, so we do our best, and it does get skinny, but we did move the priority from, um, a low to a medium priority.
Okay, so I thought it was already at a medium, uh, and that it would be looked at higher, that was part of that discussion we had, because it'd just be a, a quick clip, you'd come around the side.
So it's hard to see in this, um, in this photo or this, um, this picture, but the red is considered high priority, the orange is considered medium priority, and the, um, yellow is considered low, uh, I'm sorry, the red is considered the... I accidentally deleted off the slide. Um, the red is high priority, the orange is medium priority, the low is the yellow, and the lowest is green. So it was listed as a low and we brought it up to a medium. If we would bring it up to a high, it would be an equivalent to a main road in town, like Division and Main Street.
Okay.
So we did bring it up one.
Well, I appreciate that, and, uh, as you'll experience, if you drive back there in the winter, because of it, how it swerves around, when you have that one-sided parking, it makes it very difficult for the constituents who live back there to safely get in and out. So I appreciate you guys moving the status up, and, um, you know, we'll be hearing more back from feedback after the end of the year, so I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
I have just a quick inquiry. Um, so I assume beet heat is made out of sugar beets?
It is actually not made out of sugar beets. Um, it is made, I can get back to you on what it's exactly made out of, but it's not made out of sugar beets. Um, I specifically read that it is not made out of that, but I can do, give you a follow-up on the specific chemical makeup of it.
Okay, just, just curious as to, you know, whether we, whether sugar is actually helping, helping our streets, but apparently not, so thank you.
You okay, Erica? Thanks, Erica, you're doing great job.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll close the council hearing, open a public hearing on ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash thirteen. This is an ordinance approving the appropriate and necessary funds for the operation of the government.
Sorry. I'll hold, I'll close the council hearing, open, I didn't have my, my mic on, sorry. Um, I'm gonna close the council hearing, open a public hearing on ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash thirteen. This is an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the city of River Falls, Wisconsin for the year two thousand twenty-four. This is the second reading and disposition, and, uh, Finance Director Josh Solinger is gonna give us a tiny presentation here.
Tiny presentation. Tiny presentation. Okay, so thank you, mayor and council, let's just jump into it. So the total budget is fifty-three million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. You can see what the original proposed budget was when we did the biennial, um, budget last year for twenty-three, twenty-four, so then just as a reminder, the vast majority of this budget, this second year of the two-year budget, decisions, discussions with the council would have occurred a year ago, and we're really just implementing that second year of the biennial budget at this point. There were some adjustments with supplemental shared revenue that we covered that are implemented, but for the most part, none of this should be new to you. Um, so then, proposed levy is seven million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. You can see what the estimated city-only excluding TID tax bill on a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house would be, which is just under fifteen hundred dollars. Um, and again, the reason it's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand is because we've not gone through the full revaluation of the community, we're assessing it about eighty percent of market value right now. And you can see compared to the fiscal plan, that we're, um, a little less than a hundred thousand dollars, actually lower than what was originally contemplated for two thousand twenty-four. So then just some capital improvement highlights for twenty-four, you can see that the BioSolids facility, again, we borrowed this year for it, but the vast majority of the expenses will occur in two thousand twenty-four. We have South Wausen Lane, which is a combination of State of Wisconsin and ARPA funding, and then you can see the rest below there. The North Substation Transformer in Powell Avenue, uh, feeder phase two project, it's listed as County Road MM, that is fixed in the CIP, if you go on our website. Those two projects, one hun, or one million dollars total, are two projects that we may borrow for this next year, those would be the only two projects that we contemplate borrowing for, but those are both development-dependent projects. So we'd be coming back to you, um, probably multiple times if that were to be the case. So then what, um, is being asked for your approval then is to approve the two thousand twenty-four budget totaling fifty-three million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. You're approving by functional area and fund, so within the general fund, it's by functional area, and then for all the rest of the funds, you're providing fund-level approval, uh, for staff to implement. And then you're approving the tax levy for tax year twenty-three collected in two thousand twenty-four of the seven million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Um, you can see that it's an increase of three point seven eight percent from twenty-twenty-two tax year collected this year, or a net increase of two point zero six percent when you consider growth, um, of the community's tax base. And then you're authorizing us to go ahead and levy on taxable properties, and we'll get that information to the county in about a month's time with your approval. So I kept it short, that's all I've got.
So stay there. So is there anybody in the audience has any questions on this? So we'll close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash thirteen, appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government.
Second. Okay, first, second, questions, comments?
Question for Mr. Simpson. So when there's adjustments to, say, roads, like we're looking at adding additional signage and whatnot, if you want us to do like upgrades to different things, uh, which isn't in the budget, what part of the budget do those come out of in the future?
Uh, I wouldn't probably authorize them. I mean, I guess I'd need to know example, what you're talking about.
So if you wanted to upgrade, let's say like a stop sign to a digital stop sign?
Um... That's a good question. Uh, the department would have some ability within their maintenance budget to make that decision or determination based on the city engineer's recommendation. So I guess I misunderstood what you're asking. Um, I thought you were talking about like upgraded street signs or something like that. You were talking about like traffic signs or traffic control stuff. So that, they have line items that are estimates based on what they've done in the past for how many poles have been knocked down or how many things need to be done. Um, new, in new subdivisions, a developer pays for, for those, so they're not budgeted because they're contributed. Um, so in your example, it would be a... So in your example, it would be a determination by our, by Erica and Todd, the city engineer.
So let's say they discover a need for one. Does that come out of, where does that come out of then?
Yeah, they'd be expected to manage that within their existing budget. There wouldn't be, there wouldn't be additional money offered or, or provided.
And there's enough additional budget so they could do some of that if they needed to?
Um, I, yeah, I think one or two signs wouldn't make a significant difference. It just depends on the magnitude of what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on that? Okay, all in favor? Or wait, I'm sorry. Christie, grab a roll call, please.
Odine.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Morissette.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Bierstedt.
Yes.
Bjork.
Yes.
And Christie? Okay. So we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2023-14. This is amending the traffic control map, adding eight new school zone signs for the recent Renaissance Academy and a speed limit sign at 1223 West Division Street. This is the first reading. Is there anybody in the audience has anything to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and open up the council hearing, and if there's any, if the council's got any questions on this.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanted to thank the city for looking at these real-world problems our city deals with and responding to them. I've been in discussion with the city on behalf of my constituents about getting a speeding sign in on West Division. If you read the packet, it talks about the traffic study found that approximately 20% of vehicles are exceeding the speed limit by five miles per hour or more, as if as a first step to lower the average speeds, an additional 25 mile per hour speed limit sign is proposed to be placed on the same post with the end school, school zone sign. The engineering department will conduct another study in the future to gauge the sign's effectiveness. Well, I appreciate that, and that's a good start. And at 20%, I think we do need to look at a digital sign there in the future, and I appreciate the efforts moving forward. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, move on to the consent agenda. First thing is resolution approving the 2020, the '24 through '28 fiscal plan. Next is resolution approving shared ride taxi grant application to the state of Wisconsin Department of Transportation for operating assistance for the year 2024. Next one is a resolution approving 2024 shared ride taxi operating contract and 2024 public transit lease agreement with Runnings, Inc. Next one is a resolution regarding agreement with counties for 2024 shared ride taxi services. Next one is a resolution accepting public improvements associated for the Sycamore. Next one is a resolution accepting the public improvements for the South Point First Edition. And the last one is a resolution approving agreement with Greenwood Cemetery Association. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number eight.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move...
Oh, I wanted to pull 11.
I'm sorry, 11?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I will move approval of consent agenda items five, six, seven, nine, and 10.
Second. First and second. Any questions or anything on anything else? Christie, a roll call?
Bjork.
Yes.
Bierstedt.
Yes.
Morissette.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Mr. Downing, you pulled number eight.
Resolution regarding agreement with counties for 2024 shared ride taxi service. I'm in favor of this, but regarding this particular subject, I would like to see if possible, and if the city can maybe think it over before responding in the future, a collaborative opportunity to work with those counties in a joint meeting of some type for transportation in the future. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move approval for number eight.
Second. First and second. Any other, any other questions? Christie, a roll call?
Morissette.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Bjork.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
Bierstedt.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Bjork, you pulled number 11.
Yeah, I just, in the packet, it talks about the $15,000 that the city would be agreeing to furnish to the Greenwood Cemetery. But, and then it talks about that beyond our normal goodwill offerings that we do there. Do we have any, I'm sure we have to have somewhat of an idea of how many dollars we are spending there mowing lawn and picking up and that. So beyond the $15,000, what, what is it costing the city residents to maintain that cemetery?
I think that's mostly just working on their equipment, yeah?
Well, we mow it, it says on here, or our mower.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I think we work on their equipment.
Yeah, I'd have to give you, I'd have to take some time to, to make sure I can give you a good answer to that. I, in, in the past, we have assisted by, if they had a mower that stopped working, we might have one of our mechanics try to fix it for them. If they, if somebody couldn't mow or something, we might mow part of it as part of the parks work. I think the amount of work we're doing is limited at this point. I think they're doing, we kind of converted from a smaller contribution and more in-kind to just kind of the cash contribution, and I think they've been fairly self-sufficient. But I can't answer your question without looking into it and asking some more people to find out exactly what we're, what we're doing, and also finding out if we actually even, if they're marking any time for it, or if it's just marked as park maintenance or something. So we'd have to see if we can pull that out for you.
I'd appreciate it if you could, please. And with that, I, I'll accept that we accept this and move this forward, so.
Second. Okay, first and second. Any other questions? Christie?
Carroll.
Yes.
Bjork.
Yes.
Bierstedt.
Yes.
Morissette.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
Okay, next move on to administrative support. Well, Scott's got anything for us, or if anybody has any questions for Scott, now would be the time?
While you're thinking of your questions, River Dazzle is November 24th. This is the 20, I think it's the 27th year. The, the Business Improvement District and the Chamber of Commerce are collaborating on a holiday celebration. That's the Friday after Thanksgiving. Mr. and Mrs. Claus costume character, carolers, a chili crawl, and other activities downtown. The, the event runs 1 to 5:30 with the parade at 6:30. For more information, you can go to rfcamber.com. City offices will be closed on Thanksgiving, for Thanksgiving on November 23rd and 24th. We also believe that the compost site will be closing for the season on November 30th. That's subject to changes in the weather before then that could close it earlier, or, I don't know, 60-degree weather in December, which I doubt is coming. So people should make plans that that, that'll be wrapped up the 30th. And I think that will be it for our announcements.
Anybody have anything for Scott? Okay, I just got a couple of appointments I'd like to make. I'd like to appoint Angela Whitaker to fill a vacancy on the River Falls Housing Authority through December of 2027, and I'd like to reappoint Kellen Wells Mangold through December of '26 on the River Falls Board of Appeals.
And move that we accept the mayor's appointments.
Second. Christie?
Bierstedt.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Bjork.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Morissette.
Yes.
Okay, next we move into closed session per Wisconsin State Statute 19.851E for the following purposes. Deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. To wit, this is discussion and consideration in terms of a potential pedestrian bicycle trail and easement agreement with property owner for property located in St. Croix County. I need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, move into closed session.
Second. Christie, give me a roll call, please.
Bjork.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Morissette.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Bierstedt.
Yes.
Okay, we will move into closed session.